Good evening. Welcome to the February 17th, 2022 Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees Meeting. I am Lee Cross and tonight I'm going to start the meeting by going through the role. It appears that we have everyone. It appears we have everyone. Is that right? All trustees are present. And then we're going to move into awards and recognitions. Mr. President, I think Mr. Hayes, Caleb Hayes, is he present here tonight? No.
No, he's not. However, I have had the opportunity to spend some time with Caleb and and with all of the changes that have happened today. He is not able to be with us. However, if you'll give me just a moment here to share my screen. He's a fine young man and would love to give me a second here. There we go. So this is Caleb Hayes and Caleb is a student originally from Independence, Kansas. And he's thrilled to be a student here. He he graduated with honors from high school and with a number of college credits from in the Independence Community College. And and as he thought about his degree path and his career interest, he thought that his best school of choice was Johnson County Community College. He plans to, after being with us, transferring to UMKC after he graduates to earn a bachelor's degree in business administration with a focus on health administration. And when when we when he told us he couldn't be here tonight, last minute changes. You know, he he had some things he wanted to share, but maybe a couple other things about him. He's incredibly active on campus. He he loves soccer, he loves theater, Quiz Bowl. He's the volleyball club president, a member of our Quiz Bowl team and participates in the Gender Sexuality Alliance. And he's just so such a neat young man and just was a pleasure to get to know him a little bit. I'm sorry he couldn't be here tonight. Here's what he wanted to say specifically though. He wanted to thank Ann Turney for giving her the opportunity to be here with you tonight, even though now he's not here with us. Appreciates the fact that the meeting is going on regardless of the inclement weather and that we're able to have the technology and the ability to participate virtually. It is a college that is known for its ability to make successful contingency plans. And and I'll embellish it here a little bit. Go with the flow if I were to paraphrase what he's saying. It's one of the best institutions, Johnson County Community College, one of the best institutions across the nation. And he believes that that shows through our faculty, our staff, our students, and the multitude of resources that we have available to support students, students of all backgrounds. Coming from a small town in Southeast Kansas, he was looking for a school that would give him new perspective while also not being too far or too big for comfort. And JCCC makes an effort to provide a safe, inclusive, and effective environment in order to mold its students into success and to create that opportunity for success in the next steps of life. Again, he says, thank you for all of this opportunity. If there's any ever an opportunity that comes about for him, for you all to meet in person, he looks forward to that day. Ladies and gentlemen, trustees, this is a bit about Caleb Hayes. All right.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Caleb, for coming to school here at Johnson County Community College and all of our students. We appreciate you. Our next item on our agenda is the open forum. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited up to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium. It should be respectful and civil and are encouraged to address individual personnel and student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion process or otherwise the subject of the review by the college or board. And I also believe the Zoom registration for each meeting is 5:00 PM the night before. Is that right, Mr. President?
That is correct for the Zoom option and it's 15 minutes before the start of the meeting when in person.
Yes, sir. And so we've we've had a Zoom component to my memory since at least the beginning of the pandemic. And so 5:00 PM the day before has always been the Zoom registration deadline. And we're observing that here now. To my knowledge, there are no registered speakers for the open forum section for tonight's board agenda. And we will now move into board reports, beginning with the Student Senate Report by Shelby Winter.
Awesome. Currently, Student Senate is working through details for elections for executive board positions next year and senators. We're utilizing technology to track attendance and we have multiple programming events for the semester. Here's some specific updates. The Student Senate will combine the first meeting of every month with inner club to expand the visibility of senators to clubs, organizations, and student leaders. The majority of General Assembly GA meetings are in MTC 107, but twice over the semester it will be held in MTC 234. The first combined meeting was held on February 4th with over 20 clubs in attendance. And at last Friday's GA, Dr. Weber, Mr. Neal, and Ms. Leers presented tuition updates. During the GA held this past Friday as well, we approved a club called Urge led by Andrea Basalo. Urge stands for Unite for Reproductive Reproductive and Gender Equity. So I'm excited about that. And then we did have one funding request that was approved 100% for Model UN for their New York conference. As for upcoming events, next Wednesday, February 23rd, BSU will be hosting a black owned business expo in the Calm atrium from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And Tracy Ratan will be a keynote speaker at the event. On Monday, February 28th, Luna and BSU will be hosting a redlining tour of Kansas City. And then on Thursday, March 3rd, at 2:00 PM in the Colab, Student Senate is partnering with the Advanced Video Production Course on an event focusing on mental health awareness and resources on campus.
When is that event again for the mental health awareness?
The Mental Health Awareness Event will be happening Thursday, March 3rd at 2:00 PM in the Colab. Sorry, are there any questions?
Shelby, I'm sorry. Yes, I didn't realize you were completed. Are there any questions for Shelby? I see trustee Costin, if I missed anybody, I I apologize, but trustee Costin.
Thanks, Chair. Shelby, thank you so much for your report. Do you have a sense of what is pressing for the student population right now as we get ready to enter into the, you know, getting close to spring break, we are finishing this year? What's really on the mind of our students right now? Do you have a sense of that?
I'm not entirely sure I can get back to you on that.
I'm just curious if if students are talking about one particular issue more than others. Are they engaged in ways that make you think that there are any issues that we need to be concerned with? What's your sense of how satisfied or dissatisfied students are with with the way things are going?
Nothing in particular, but you know, there are always like little things that can be improved. I think we're trying to vie for more library hours currently, you know, provide like longer hours of safe study spaces for students, especially during finals week. But you know, we're we're very excited for the spring semester and I know it'll go by so quickly.
Very good. Thank you so much for your report.
Any other questions? Mr. Trustee, former Chair Musil.
Thank you, Chair Cross. Shelby, yesterday at College Council, we heard from Ashda about the presentation you referenced in your remarks where Doc, I think Rachel Leers and Randy Weber and someone else, I forgot, presented to the Student Senate about, at least the Executive Committee, about the proposed tuition increases that we're going to talk about later in the meeting. I just wondered if there was a sense from your students, from you and your other students as to an understanding of why those might be necessary or what what students were thinking from the Student Senate leadership position. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I do recall the presentation from Dr. Weber, Mr. Neal, and Ms. Leers. They basically just went over, you know, certain data and like statistics from preceding years and just explained very like in a very clear manner on tuition updates and their proposed changes on that. So any questions that came from students and stuff were answered and yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee Musil. Shelby, any other questions for Shelby? I'm looking. I do not see anything. Shelby, thank you very much for being present again and thank you as always. The next item, go ahead. Sorry.
I just said, thank you, Shelby.
The next item on our agenda is by some guy named Dick Carter, our college lobbyist.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Things are a little crazy right now, so much so that in an effort to even get updates out to the Board of Trustees, I realized when I pulled my report this afternoon to make a few notes that you got double report because you got a portion of the report from last month as well as this month. So the second part's for free. And you can just use that to to line the birdcage or whatever you may do with it. Even now, right now, I've got three streaming hearings up on the monitor to my left as legislative committees continue to work into the evening and produce bills from their committees for what we anticipate will be a busy turnaround week next week. Each session has its own flavor and this one is is definitely one for the history books. Over the past couple of weeks, we've seen a congressional map vetoed, a congressional map overridden, a couple of lawsuits filed on said congressional map, hearings mandating requirements for public schools under the auspices of transparency that are already in place. Secretary of State badgered over alleged voter fraud, but no proof of fraud. Hearings to limit or destroy renewable energy efforts, votes on bills to allow off-label prescriptions, and hold harmless any provider that might write such a script. Committee assignments and leadership posts for multiple senators polled or juggled in ways that I've not seen in the 30 years that I've been participating in government affairs. We had another legislative member get pulled over for a DUI, an additional review of Board of Regents appointees. I've left out many of the other items for the sake of brevity and you probably are smiling on the inside, but that's what we're dealing with right now in Topeka. And I wanted you to have a sense of what the environment looks like over here because it really does impact everything else that goes on. And it just lets you know how folks that you send over to Topeka are using their time in the Capitol. On January 27th, KACC T held a breakfast in the Capitol. Dr. Bound, Kate Allen, Trustees Ingram and Ratan all traveled to Topeka for that event. And then we used some of that time a little bit later in the day to visit with some legislators. The highly visible Apex Bill, which is an economic development incentive bill, passed both the House and Senate. It was reworked considerably in the House. The Senate adopted the changes that the House made, the governor signed it, and we'll see what happens from this point on. Kansas is one of two states now vying for this major economic development project and certainly would probably have an impact for us on the JCCC campus. Let's take a look at where some of the higher education bills are right now. Senate Bill 215 is the Motorcycle Training Driver Education Truck Driver Training Bill. JCCC testified on this bill on January 27th. Jimmy Bowie, who heads up these programs for the college, really did an excellent job as a representative for for the college. And we requested an amendment in that hearing, one that would allow us to draw down available dollars from the Highway Transportation Safety Fund. But presently, KSDE, the Department of Education, has our driver education program classified as a commercial program, making us not eligible to do so. And so we've requested an amendment that has been included in the bill, but the bill has not been worked as of yet. We anticipate that the Senate Education Committee will work that bill tomorrow. Senate Bill 340 is the Kansas Promise Act Trailer Bill. It's the cleanup bill that I've talked about in the past. That bill was worked very quickly when the legislature got together earlier in January. That bill has been sitting on general orders and remains on the calendar and we anticipate that it will be worked when the legislature begins to tackle all of the bills on their list to move them from one house of the origin to the other. Senate Bill 453 is a bill to address nursing shortages as well as additional issues at adult home care facilities. The college had a voice in the development of the bill. Most visibly, the bill would allow courses such as CNA programs to be taught by LPNs where currently an RN is required to to teach those courses. That bill had a hearing in Senate Public Health and Welfare on Tuesday of this week. It awaits action by the committee and so we'll see if that happens tomorrow or Monday or Tuesday of next week. Committees are still meeting. This has been Higher Education Budget Week. KACC T delivered the budget presentations like they do annually in the respective Senate and House Budget Committees. That happened today, actually. The total request for the Community College system is around 203 million, which includes governors' budget enhancements of about 24.5 million for fiscal year 23. The the system is also requesting access to 195 million in challenge grants overseen at the Kansas Department of Commerce. Currently, state universities can participate in applying for those grants, but community colleges, technical schools, colleges cannot. And so we're seeking a proviso that would allow allow the system institutions to be able to access those grants as well. Finally, the Senate Tax Committee today moved a package of tax cuts that play in the overall role of the estate's economy. And so that's why I wanted to talk about them. They don't really impact the community college system per se, but when you start talking about what that looks like in the overall grand scheme of things, it all plays a role in the in the bigger picture. One bill would eliminate the 1.5 mils of property tax to fund maintenance at state universities. We call that the Educational Building Fund or EBF Fund. That that fund has been around for for quite a while, generates multiple million dollars that is divided out on worst case scenario needed projects at state universities. So a bill was passed out of the Tax Committee that would eliminate that fund. Another bill would raise the property tax exemption from the current first 20,000 value of residential property to 100,000 for public education. And then there was a bill that's been talked about for a number of sessions that was also passed out of the Senate Tax Committee this morning that would create a sales tax holiday for back-to-school purchases. So the total cost of all three of those bills to the state revenue stream would be about 221 million. With the types of surpluses that we have on hand right now and the way those are being looked at by the budget committees, probably not a large number, but when you start talking about how we impact property tax and the mill calculation rate, again, that all plays into the bigger picture down the road for what we might be looking at as far as how we continue to abide by Senate Bill 13, which was passed last year, which creates zero or revenue neutral budgets for local governing bodies. Next week begins the process for turnaround week. That means committees, actually committees will meet Monday and Tuesday, but committees then don't meet for the the remainder of the week. And legislators will be on their respective floors, so on the Senator and the House, working to move bills out of the House of Origin by the February 24th deadline. Mr. Chair, that was a lot. It was fast, but that's kind of what's going on in Topeka right now and it's it's a lot to handle.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. We're glad you're there. Thank you for flattering my humor. Are there any questions for Mr. Carter? I can't. I don't see any.
I see two. I see trustee Smith Everett and trustee Musil so far.
I will go with trustee Musil first.
Laura beat me, but I couldn't find I couldn't find my unmute button. My mouse was jumping around. Dick, on the, I read with some interest, the effort to raise the floor before the 20 mils of state levy applies to properties to fund K-12 education. And I think it's, you can confirm confirm for me what the exemption is now. Is it 20,000?
It is 20,000. It's the first 20,000.
So you pay not no property taxes to K-12 education to the state for the first $20,000 in your assessed value?
Correct.
And it and they would raise that to 100,000 in the name of property tax relief. I wonder if anybody did an analysis of how much that shifts the burden to Johnson County taxpayers from the rest of the state. And I think our obvious effort, I think Johnson County has always supported K-12 public funding and I do too. But this seems to me another way where that burden is shifted more so to Johnson County taxpayers than the rest of the state because $100,000 in assessed value on a home eliminates 90% of the homes, I would guess, in the rest of Kansas, including a bunch in Johnson County. But was there any discussion about that impact and the shift in the tax burden?
Trustee Musil, I don't recall any specific conversation regarding that shift. We do know that the overall amount for changing from the 20, the first 20,000 to the first 100,000 is about 147 million. So again, you can you can take a look at home values across different areas of the state and probably get a pretty good idea of what that looks like. You certainly are going to exempt quite a few homes in Johnson County that are part of that $147 million cost to the state revenue stream.
Let me make sure I'm clear in that you know, is it 100,000 in appraised value or 100,000 in assessed value? Because a home that's worth $100,000 is assessed at 11 and a half percent. And you can get back to me on that later.
Yeah, I'll have to get back to you on that, just so I'm sure.
A big difference, but I think when we talk about property tax burdens in Johnson County, that may end up not being the savior that some folks think it is as far as reducing property tax burden. Thank you.
Good questions. I too would be interested in the answer to that, Mr. Carter. Thank you, trustee Musil. Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, Dick, I just wanted to thank you again for being there and for making sense out of the madness. It's, I feel like I'm probably more plugged in than the average Joe and even I can't make as much sense out of it as you do each month, particularly in these really intense months. So I appreciate your reports being as succinct and clear as possible, both when you're presenting to us, but also your written reports, which often I flag and go back and review after hearing. You sort of give the anecdotal things that fill in the pieces. So thank you so much. It's, as we've mentioned multiple times, an election year and some of the crazy things that can happen in election years seem to be coming true. So hang in there and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Trustee, thank you, trustee Smith Everett. Trustee Ingram.
Now, two years ago, I did not know how to raise my hand on this. So I just want you all to know how much I have improved my skills. And that's serious. I'm really serious. You mentioned the $100,000 appraised versus assessed. I know Greg wanted that information and then Chair Cross just indicated that he would like it as well. But I'm assuming that all of us will receive that because that's that's really important information and I appreciate, as was mentioned, your, not only your expertise, but your ability to convey it to us. So ditto, ditto, ditto. Thanks so much, Dick.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a few things for Mr. Carter, but any other questions from the trustees? Seeing none, Mr. Carter, Carl ICE, he's president, former president of BNSF, he passed with the recommendation, correct?
So the recommendations that came out of the Senate Education Committee are a vote for approval of Regent ICE and a vote of no recommendation, but forwarding the names on to the Senate for confirmation of Regent Lane and Winter.
So have they been approved?
They are. They are on the list. There is no time limit, I believe, on on how the Senate can take up approval of Governor's appointees. My understanding from just some of the hall talk and listening to to those that kind of know where things are at, I I think that everyone will will be confirmed. It may not be 40 to zero votes on all of the appointees, but I I'm getting the sense that they will pass the the Senate test overall, once once they come up for a vote.
Winter was my state senator growing up in Lawrence and he loved to argue with my mother. And I think he's a fair man and I just, I was kind of stunned at that. Were there any reasons why they gave to not recommend? Was there any reason why they didn't recommend?
You know, that's difficult for me to say. I do know that the Senate Confirmation Committee met over the the Confirmation Oversight Committee met over the summer and all three of those appointees had gone through that process and were on the Senate calendar. It has happened before where conferees, especially as it relates to the Board of Tax Appeals, those conferees were vetted multiple times, sometimes by different committees. So it's not, it's not an uncommon process. I don't know what the the overall reasoning was.
No, thank you. Next on, I think your second page here, Secretary of State Scott Schwab, that's that's, he used to be in the State House from Johnson County.
He was the Speaker Pro Tem from Olathe. I think he actually lives in Overland Park now.
Yes, I mean, he's a frankly, a conservative Republican, right?
He is.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're talking about the same. The governor has these surpluses. My final question. She's going to eliminate the sales tax on food and the $4 fee on vehicle registration renewals. Do we have any plan for revenue enhancements since we're eliminating those sources?
So those are proposed items for legislative consideration. That doesn't mean that they'll actually take place. She also included $250 rebate to every tax filer. So the food sales tax has about a $450 million price tag. The sale, the rebate to tax filers has about a $400 million price tag. There's a number of items, Mr. Chair, that are included in the governor's budget with regard to using some of the surplus budget items. One of them will be some capers investment. And the other one will be using several hundred million dollars to buy down some bonded indebtedness that ends up saving the state a few hundred million in interest payments. So it just depends on how all those pieces parse out in the budget process. Again, the the House and the Senate are both going through their overall agency budgeting process right now. And so it's hard to say, it's it's hard to give you a really good answer or direction on where where we think those things are ultimately going. Early in the session, before the session, food sales tax was like, that was the topic to talk about. Right now, it's it's kind of on the back burner.
Well, we certainly thank you for your work and the time it takes to to pay attention over there. So thank you, Mr. Carter. Any other questions for Mr. Carter? Seeing none, our next, thank you, Mr. Carter. Our next presenter will be President of the Faculty Association, Dr. James Liker. Jim?
Good evening and happy snow day. Well, tonight I have two bits of good news followed by a few items of minor concern. First, a happy story. Many years ago, one of our math professors, Christopher M., did a good deed for a friend in graduate school. That friend has since gone on to establish a successful company and recently reached out to ask about ways to return the favor. Instead of suggesting a lake house in New Hampshire, which is what I would have done, Chris recommended a $100,000 donation to the JCCC Foundation. That amount will fund the Chris M. STEM Scholarship. Name was decided by the donor, which will distribute five $1,000 scholarships every year in perpetuity. It will be awarded to students declaring a STEM major enrolled in 12 or more credit hours with a GPA of 3.0 or higher with preference to math majors and with preference to math majors and secondary preference to veterans. If you know Chris at all, you know there are two things about him. One is that he doesn't like to talk about anything other than math, and two, he doesn't like to draw attention to himself. He's the very picture of humility. So it's not surprising none of us knew anything about this until it was announced at the Foundation Board a couple of weeks ago. With his permission, I am outing him here. So thank you, Professor M., both to you and to your benefactor. Second, you heard at the last committee of the whole about the college's efforts to address mental health. More and more students are reporting overwhelming anxiety, some of which is evident by our early alerts going up forty-seven percent since 2019. As these rates climb, professors increasingly find themselves escorting students in crisis to our counseling center, where because of demand, they sometimes have to wait before seeing someone. Jessica Garcia and her colleagues in counseling have set up a waiting room, a calming room, really, which should be open when the college reopens tomorrow, I believe. This was done with the help and advice of students themselves from Professor Darla Green's interior design classes. This is an example of faculty working across disciplines and across branches for the greater good. If you, as a board, want to understand this problem in a way that gets beyond the data, I encourage you to talk directly with our counseling faculty. It's in their offices where the real picture emerges, even more so than in classroom, um, in the classrooms of instructional faculty like myself. Excuse me. Well, two weeks ago, on February second, the college had a snow day, the first of at least two this month, um, hopefully no more than two. I remember seeing Dr. Brown in the food court the day before. We chatted about the weather, and I offered him sympathy in advance because I knew no matter what decision was made regarding campus closure, someone was going to be unhappy. And that prediction was accurate. Faculty leadership received a flurry of messages during the closure day asking why virtual instruction was expected to stop when we've been teaching from home during a pandemic for the last two years. Faculty who teach synchronized hybrid classes, which were scheduled to meet online that Wednesday, wondered why the entire semester needed to be reworked, and in one case, a guest lecture was even canceled for the benefit of students who enrolled in classes with no intention of coming to campus anyway. When the closure was announced, some of the messages sent by deans were interpreted to mean that even asynchronous online classes could not meet, which we've learned since was not true. This begs the question of what being closed actually means. Instruction is never closed. Most of us grade, answer emails, hold meetings, and work in Canvas no matter what's happening with campus facilities, even if we're off contract or at three in the morning. These concerns were raised and I think addressed effectively by Dr. McLeod, Dr. McLeod at Monday's meeting of the Academic Branch Council. Between that and the ABC summation, which Dr. Ty Edwards sent afterwards, we should be in better shape going forward. Today, for instance, there was no repetition of that earlier confusion of two weeks ago. Honestly, I think confusion is inevitable if you don't have careful and proactive communication. We do that well externally, not always internally. Whenever a blanket policy is issued that affects instructors' own policies as laid out in their syllabi, there's going to be a quick scramble for clarity. I'm sure there's a good reason for the closed means closed policy changing as it did, yet it speaks to a need for improved, uh, improved shared governance when faculty don't know what that reason is. And if we don't know, then students don't either, because typically we're the ones explaining it to them. Moving on, the Faculty Association and its affiliates, the KNEA, are gearing up for two statewide conferences, one to be held in Topeka in April and another next month specifically for higher ed. Now, like Mr. Carter, we're following conversations in the legislature rather closely, or at least as close as we can. Those conversations primarily concern K-12. However, one particular item, House Bill two six six two, has caught the FA's attention. This is the Parents' Bill of Rights and Transparency Act. As I read it, the bill attempts to expand the authority of parents regarding their children's education, children being defined as anyone below age eighteen. Without wading into the arguments my K-12 partners are making in defense of their practices, this might affect colleges like JCCC due to our high proportion of College Now students. I fielded questions the last few days if this would collide with FERPA, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, or with basic expectations of classroom autonomy on which we depend. If a high school student, for instance, were to enroll in a class where human sexuality is the topic, or in one of our history classes where the sexual revolutions relevance for LGBTQ rights is being studied, where do state laws regarding parental rights and federal laws regarding student privacy intersect? Where does one stop and the other begin? I know this is all speculative until the session is over, but like with campus closures, we're going to need some guidance as the landscape changes. We're going to need support, too. This board historically has embraced local control. I encourage you to continue that tradition because what you call local control, we call academic freedom. FA and KNEA take seriously any attack upon it. Finally, like every public institution, I'm sure JCCC is assessing its mandatory mask policy. Last month, trustee Cross asked if I could provide a list of faculty's COVID stories. Sorry, Lee, I really can't because there are way too many to account for. I could talk about the professor who in spring twenty twenty had lousy internet service at her home and drove to the campus parking lot to teach classes from her car. I could talk about how we've all become quasi-experts on FERPA and its application for hybrid classes, which includes telling students that there are things they can't do in a Zoom class just because they're at home, like be intoxicated or be undressed. And as I've already talked about repeatedly, um, the effects of the pandemic on testing and academic integrity are considerable, and we discussed some of this yesterday at the College Council. Despite all of that, COVID has forced us to be more flexible and basically, I think, more efficient in terms of instruction and counseling. Overall, I speak for many colleagues who believe college policies have done a superior job of keeping us safe. My advice, don't blow that by going mask optional too early. We're all eager to declare an end to this, but we lose more than we gain if it happens prematurely. And Chair Cross, that concludes my update.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any questions for Professor Leicher? Uh, I think trustee Ingram. And then trustee Smith Everett.
Trustee Ingram, you didn't want to speak?
No, my, my, standing.
She waved right as you, uh, asked her. Um, again, no, um, comments per se. I just want to thank Jim for his report. I, I especially appreciate, um, you bringing up how the Parents' Bill of Rights could affect JCCC. I, of course, in my professional life, have been paying close attention to that, and I had not thought about the implications for our bill-enrolled students and appreciate your perspective on that. Thank you.
Jim, thank you so much. Um, uh, while serving in a political capacity and having a penchant for anecdotal evidence, um, I just was curious to have stories and to be able to share what our faculty have gone through, uh, during this time, and so I appreciate you, and I didn't, I didn't mean to overwhelm you. But thank you.
It's been an overwhelming time. You can't help it, so.
Thank you for your report. Any other questions for Professor Leicher? Seeing none, uh, next we have.
I think Nancy has a hand up now, Lee, sorry.
Excuse me, there it is.
No, and, and I do, and I apologize for the hand up, hand down. I, I wasn't really sure when I wanted to ask the question because it's not totally directed at Professor Leicher, for which I apologize, but you did bring up the College Council. And I don't necessarily see the College Council on our agenda in board reports. Will that be something that we will have in the future? Okay. I mean, I realize we, you just met, but I just thought, I just wondered.
Yeah, I, I think that's all part of, uh, trustee Ingram. What, what we're talking about is what, how do we report out on shared governance? Um, you know, will, will we have each of the shared governance structures report out? Will we figure out how to do it into one report and so forth? So we're working through that.
Okay, I apologize. I just thought.
Great question.
Thank you. Thank you.
And if there's no other questions, thank you again, Professor Leicher. Uh, the next item we have is Johnson County Education Research Triangle by former Chair Trustee Musel.
Thank you, Chair Cross. Um, we have not had a meeting, and I'm yet list, not yet listed on the website. Lee's still up there. Um, so we're working on the transition, but the next meeting is April twenty seventh at the K-State Olathe Campus. I'll just remind everybody that this is the result of the two thousand eight election by the voters of Johnson County that agreed to tax themselves one-eighth of a cent in sales taxes to be split between the KU, uh, Cancer Center, KU Edwards Campus, and K-State Olathe. Um, the website, if you want to learn more about it, is www.jokotriangle dot, I think it's dot org. I just, I wrote down dot, dot, dot com, and I think it's dot org, so.
I think it's.
I will have a report in the May meeting, um, and I do not have the numbers from last month's, uh, sales tax receipts.
Yeah, that, that may be my fault. I'm sorry, Mr. Trustee. I know revenues have been consistently up, and I apologize for not sending it to you. Um, thank you for your report. Uh, the next item we have is from the Johnson County Community College Foundation, uh, trustee Don Rattan.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I believe I was next on there with Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. Do you want me to go ahead and give that report?
Yes, I, I'm blind in one eye, and I missed that.
Nope, you were just fine. Just thought I would bring that to your attention. Um, thank you very much. Our next meeting is April first, and it will be following the PTK luncheon, which is going to be held in Junction City this year. I believe the invitation was, uh, provided to all the trustees, and we have a couple of people who will be attending that day. Um, and I was going to talk a little bit about the welcome, the, the, the mention that, uh, Dick Carter gave, uh, regarding the event that we had on January twenty seventh at the State House where a number of trustees and presidents, I think there were fourteen presidents from across the state who attended that morning, and we welcomed our legislators with coffee and donuts. It was the first time we'd ever done that. It has been deemed very successful, so we do plan to do that again next year, but it just gave everyone the opportunity to visit a little bit. We also had a welcome from, uh, the Lieutenant Governor, which was kind of a surprise to everyone, but, uh, we were able to be in the same room with him, and people had an opportunity to visit very briefly with him as well. Um, I would also like to report a few of our presidents and trustees from across the state attended the Legislative Summit, which was held uh, the first week of February, and, uh, we've had some good feedback from that. Um, let me see here. Uh, and, and let me go back. I apologize because I, I want to recognize, and I think Dick did this as well, but um, in Topeka, the morning of the twenty seventh, we had Don Rattan, we had Kate Allen, Dick Carter, and Dr. Brown. So, uh, trustee Rattan, we were really glad that you were able to attend that day. So thank you for being there. Last Friday, um, our Executive Director of KACC T, Heather, I had a Zoom meeting with Chair Cross, myself, and Joy Coeston, uh, in her new role as the liaison to, as liaison to KACC T. She reviewed a number of items, uh, along with Dr. Beyond, uh, that was telling us, she just brought us up to, to speed on what was going on, particularly with the state budget um, and how those affect the Kansas Community Colleges. She also refer, uh, referenced specific bills similar to what Dick Carter shared earlier this evening with us that she is involved in, um, as the session continues. But, uh, Dick gave a great assessment. I talked to Heather on a pretty routine basis, and she continues to have constant update, updates, uh, throughout the session. So I want to reiterate what Dick Carter had to say about that. Um, I think that truly does conclude my report, but we were a little busier than usual with KACC T obligations. So it's been a, a good month for us.
Thank you, trustee Vice Chair Ingram. I apologize for missing you. I, my nervousness, I crossed off E, and I should have called on E.
It is not a problem whatsoever.
See, trustee Musel has a question.
I, I, I think it would simply be worthwhile to note that three of us, along with Dr. Brown and Kate Allen, were able to attend the ACCT Legislative Summit in Washington um, last week, uh, a week, a little over a week ago, and I think importantly, uh, Dawn and Joy attended the new trustee orientation, which is a sacrifice of an all-day Sunday uh, to kind of get up to speed on things from a national association level. And then we were able to meet with, uh, personally with our two U.S. Senators and by Zoom with Congresswoman Sharice Davids to talk about community college issues. And so that's all I wanted to say was note that we did that. Um, appreciate Kate setting that up and, and Dr. Brown being with us, but then would, would love to hear from Dawn and Joy about that experience because they put in a lot of time.
That, that's a good idea. Thank you, Mr. Musel. Uh, trustee Rattan?
Yes, I will say that I've spent a lot of time with the ACCC, ACCT, either on the national legislative level or in Kansas. So it's been a key part of my onboarding over the last month. Um, as I told Dr. Brown and, um, Chairman Musel, or trustee Musel, uh, this uh, orientation that the college has set up for us has been very, very good. When we went to the new trustee orientation, all they really did was reinforce what the college has taught us about our roles on a local level. So kudos to all those who have been involved from the staff and have come to see us during orientation to get us up to speed. It's been very, very good, and we really appreciate it as new trustees. Um, I'll continue on with the foundation report. Uh, we had a couple of recent meetings. We had the Investment Committee meeting that was on January the twenty fifth. This is a quarterly meeting in which the Foundation's Investment Committee reviews the Foundation's investment portfolio performance from the previous quarter. And then the Board of Directors had their winter board meeting on Wednesday, January the twenty sixth. Our upcoming meetings, um, and events are a Foundation Member's Social. Um, that's on fourth, that's at four thirty P.M. on Thursday, January the twenty fourth. It's going to be in JCCC's, JCCC's new Academic Resource Center located in the first floor of the library. Foundation members will have the opportunity to hear from leaders of this area as well as students who benefited from the great resources available in this new student center space. And then the Executive Committee, uh, will meet next Tuesday, will meet next on Tuesday, March twenty second. Um, here's a spotlight on a community partnership. Um, one of our goals is to collaborate with community partners to help ensure that our students have the financial support they need to be successful at the college. The Foundation is excited to highlight a recent community partnership. So on February the twenty sixth, the Foundation will host a free benefit concert in the Midwest Trust Center's Polsky Theater. This is going to benefit a new scholarship for our student veterans. In the fall of twenty twenty one, the Foundation began working with members of the local Korean-American community. Multiple generous individual gifts were made to the Foundation in honor of Korean War veterans to establish a new scholarship at JCCC. These discussions involve the, the idea of a benefit concert featuring multiple local classical musicians with proceeds benefiting this new scholarship. We invite everyone to join us. Again, it's on Saturday, February the twenty sixth at three P.M. for the Honoring Korean War Veterans Scholarship Benefit Concert. For more details, you can go to the Midwest Trust Center website and click on Up to, Upcoming Events tab. And then the Foundation is proud to help facilitate this important community collaboration as well as others like it, creating new opportunities for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Rattan, uh, and uh, thank you for your service there on the Foundation. Uh, trustee Coeston, I think I skipped you about, uh, if you wanted to add anything about the trip to DC with ACCT?
Thanks, thanks a lot, Chair, uh, Cross, and, uh, thank you, every, everyone for their reports. Um, I thought the conference trip was really a marvelous way for us to spend some time together, uh, getting to know each other a little bit better, but also, uh, roaming around Washington, D.C. getting to know each other a little bit better, but also roaming around Washington, DC, learning about some of the issues that really are impacting community colleges at a national level. So it was really wonderful. We had a lot of great presentations and speakers. But I think probably the most interesting part for me was visiting our representatives in the state Capitol. So I was very pleased that both senators were gracious and thoughtful about how they listened to our concerns and our hopes for the colleges and also our Congresswoman was also very receptive to our meeting. So it was just really a very positive experience all around, and I want to thank Dr. Bowne and the college for helping us get there.
Thank you, trustee Coaston. Trustee Smith Everett, did you have a, do you want to say something?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to comment about the foundation report, but I will jump back about the ACCT Legislative Summit. I just want to say I have very fond memories of that. That was my first event to go to as a new trustee. It is such a great way to immerse yourself in the world of trustees and community college boards and really understand, like you both said, the national perspective on issues. I just want to say how very jealous I am that you had a keynote speaker, the First Lady of the United States. We did not have such a great keynote speaker. And then we also did not have either senator available the day we went. So I just want to put in the bid right now. I've committed to going every other year. So I will go back next year, and I need one of you lucky charms to come back so that I can also meet our senators. We were greeted by our gracious representative, but not our senator. So I'm looking to get those stamps on my DC postcard. I don't know. I'm just saying. If I could just jump back for the foundation report for just a minute, as the other member, thank you. I just wanted to say that our foundation president, it's president, right? Who has the title, right? I don't want to mess up the title.
You're talking about Rob?
Yes.
Executive Director.
Thank you. I knew it wasn't president. Okay, Executive Director will be leaving us this next month, and I just wanted to thank him for his commitment, and he was instrumental in onboarding me as a new trustee to the foundation and the work that you all do. They're incredible and really important asset. I wish him the best as he heads back to Olathe Health, I believe, or whatever he's doing. And we just want to thank him so much for his commitment to our foundation, our students, and our community college. It has been an immeasurable resource and leadership that we appreciate. So that concludes my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Thank you, trustee Smith Everett. Let me disaggregate this and go back. Any other questions for trustee Ingram at the KACCCT report? Seeing none for trustee Ingram at KACCCT. Any questions for trustee Rattan in her report on the foundation? Any other questions? I see none. So now I'm going to move on to our next item, the committee reports and recommendations. The collegial steering did not meet. Is that right, trustee Ingram?
Correct.
Okay. And so that leads us to the committee of the whole report. I was going to have trustee Hamel give the committee of the whole report. I'm just kidding. I'll do it. The committee of the whole met on January 31, 2022. The committee of the whole was held by a Zoom webinar format at 8:30 AM on Monday, the 31st. Dr. Bowne, myself, trustees Ingram, Smith Everett, Greg Musel, Joy Coaston, and Dawn Rattan all attended the meeting. Trustee Hamel was absent. We had a presentation provided by Randy Weber and Mickey McLeod, Doctors Randy Weber and Mickey McLeod, on strategic planning and student success. It was an update regarding the strategic planning goal, one, support learners in achieving their educational goals. Trustees were provided a link to the spring PLD session detailing team's work on the goal during the fall semester, and Randy and Mickey provided the baseline metrics for the goal and shared how the work will impact outcomes. We had a student mental health update provided by Alex Wells, Ann Turney, and David Krug presented about mental health at JCCC. Statistics for the state and county, excuse me, the college were given to show the level of need for mental health services at the college. Current student support services were discussed, Counselors' Student Assistant Program, Calming Room, in partnership with the Johnson County Mental Health, thanks in part to trustee Ingram, were for a licensed clinician on campus that were discussed as support services for students. Student life and student wellness programming was presented as both active and passive approaches for student mental health wellness, along with the examples of programs in the past year. A brief overview of what other schools have for mental health and wellness programs, along with systems they have in place were provided. This was followed as to requests to create a mental health and wellness advisory board, create student wellness advocates, and investigate, create, hire a coordinator for mental health initiatives across our campus. Questions and discussion included further data analysis, establishing a baseline for mental health currently on campus, utilizing current departments for mental health, and furthering the development of these recommendations. We do have a few recommendations for action, and I think if I may, Mr. President, I'm going to, for the moment, pass on the FY '23 tuition and fee presentation and discussion and go through first the academic planning software and the Microsoft Reseller and Support Services, just to get those out of the way, if we can, as a matter of course in business, and then come back to something I think that'll probably take the bulk of our time. So we do have a, an RFP request to establish a contract for academic planning software. The software technology will allow students and faculty and staff to work together to dynamically create educational plans that allow students to graduate on time or transfer in the four-year, to a four-year institution as seamlessly as possible. And so these recommendations are in your board packets, pages three and four. I guess I'll ask, do we have any questions on those two recommendations for actions? Seeing none, and trustee Musel or somebody can tell me if I'm doing this inappropriately, but I thought it best just to do it this way and in turn. So it is the recommendation of the committee of the whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from Stellak for the academic planning software for a base of $120,000 and a total estimated expenditure of $517,746, including all renewal options through 2027. Do I have a motion for this recommendation, please?
I would move for that.
Second.
Okay, having a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on this proposal? Seeing none, although sorry, you touched your hair, trustee.
I was scratching.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries unanimously. The next item for recommendation we have is another RFP to establish a contract for an authorized Microsoft Reseller for order fulfillment of Microsoft products. The support services will include advising the college of Microsoft licensing and product information, assist with maximizing JCCC's return on the investment, that's ROI, for the college's Microsoft environment, order fulfillment, pricing strategies, Microsoft licensing, knowledge, transfer assistance, et cetera, to benefit the college in our transactions with Microsoft. Justification and other details again are in your packet there. And so it is, fellow trustees, the recommendation of the committee of the whole that the Board of Trustees accept this recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from Crayon Software for the Microsoft Reseller and Support Services for an estimated base year of $517,789.26 and a total estimated expenditure of $3,995,059.99, including the renewal options through 2028. And may I have a motion, please, for that?
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Coaston and seconded by.
Ingram.
Trustee Ingram. And then I have Terry Slish in my ear saying, who moved the first one? I believe it's trustee Musel, seconded by trustee Coaston.
Smith Everett.
That's what I have.
Okay, thank you. So with respect to the Microsoft RFP, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. And hearing none, the recommendation passes unanimously. Now, that moves us to another item for recommendation that we discussed at length, I believe in both December and January in our committee of the whole. And it is with respect to the academic year 2022-23 tuition and fee rates. It was a report of the committee of the whole that the packet includes the analysis prepared by the college administration of tuition and fees for the 2022-2023 academic year. And the administration's recommendations is as follows, that tuition and fees be raised to $97 per credit hour for Johnson County residents. That it be raised to $116 per credit hour for other Kansas county residents, $143 per credit hour for our metro rate for our Missouri neighbors, and $228 per credit hour for out-of-state and international students. It is, of course, the recommendation of the college committee of the whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to adopt the tuition rates listed above for the 2022-2023 academic year. And do I have a motion for this recommendation?
I would like to discuss.
Right, I think.
Point of order.
Yes.
You need a motion in a second, and then we.
I appreciate your request, but we need a motion first, and then I believe I asked for discussion at that point.
Appreciate it.
I will move for the recommendation of the administration as set forth in the packet.
Second.
Okay, having a move, a motion by trustee Musel, and a second, I believe, by trustee Smith Everett. Is there any discussion now? And I think trustee Hamel spoke first, so, Mr. Trustee.
Sure, thank you. So I talked to Andy a little bit about this here earlier, and I asked kind of approximately how much revenue we trying to raise with this. And after a little quick calculation, he came up with about 1.1 million. Does that sound right still? Okay. It does seem like pretty much every month, we're spending something around there or more than that regularly. And I think we could figure out another place to come up with the 1.1 million dollar difference. Another thing being that the way this is broken out, the largest portion of our revenue comes from the Johnson County taxpayers through their property taxes and through rents being paid. Even when you go through businesses and they're doing your shopping at these businesses, you're paying through it that way. So again, the, I believe that the Johnson County residents and students are definitely paying enough. I do not want to raise their taxes every year as we normally do, and then on top of it, go ahead and raise their tuition. I am open to raising tuition for the other rates, but I am not personally open at this point in time to raising our rates for our residents that are already paying the largest fees to our college.
I was muted, sorry. Thank you, trustee Hamel. Any other discussion? Or trustee Hamel, you would need, and you and I discussed this actually briefly a couple of days ago.
Yeah, briefly.
We would need an amended motion or some other course of action with a second, and I see that
Okay.
trustee Musel has his hand up. Mr. Trustee, Musel?
Thank you, Chair. Chair Cross, I don't disagree with trustee Hamel that larger increases for out-of-county and out-of-district students wouldn't be something we should consider. One of the things that I heard and I liked at the committee of the whole was that an effort through retreat or otherwise to develop a tuition policy, which we've never really had with respect to, you know, what portion of our general fund should tuition constitute? How should we be positioning ourselves with respect to other community colleges in Kansas? Our peer institutions, our area institutions, whether it's Kansas City, Kansas Community College, or Metropolitan Community College? I would love to see us develop that type of a policy. I think at this point, given where we are and needing to get this established for the fall 2022 semester, I don't think we have much leeway to change the recommendation that's been made. I, it's no secret, I've been supportive of an increase in our tuition rates for several years now, partially for what Mark has recognized. Looking back to, this is my, this will be my 12th, my 11th fiscal year that I've been part of the budgeting process, which includes setting tuition. My first year, it was $81. It's now $94. But it's been $93 for Johnson County residents since 2017. So in five years, we have raised tuition $1. That hasn't come anywhere near to keeping up with inflation, and it doesn't reflect anything close to the amount of property tax dollars that have increased in that same period of time. In that same period of time, if my numbers are correct, we've increased the amount of ad valorem property taxes we've collected from 95 million to 118 million, so $23 million, about a 26 or 7% increase in the property tax burden. So I think it's important that we are affordable and accessible. I think we are easily, we easily meet those tests right now. One of the benefits of a conference like in Washington is to set up lunch with community college trustees from two Chicago-area community colleges, one from Yakima, Washington, and one from Lenore, North Carolina, the president of that college. We talked about tuition rates. The lowest of any of them was $147 a credit hour. We're at 94. So I don't think, number one, I've said for a long time, I don't think it's tuition rates that are affecting our enrollment. I think it's other areas of life, whether it's single parenting, it's multiple jobs, it's transportation issues. There are increasing and still eligible resources from the federal government through Pell Grants and otherwise for our needy students. We have the Kansas Promise Act, and we've increased our private contributions from Johnson County to the point where we're now giving over a million and a half dollars a year in private scholarships. It was under a million dollars in 2017 when we were at $93 a credit hour. We'll still be the lowest in the state. We'll still be the lowest in the area. I agree with Mark. I think the point is important that students pay property taxes, and when we get to the budget and the mill levy, I think we want to recognize that and discuss it. Who should pay is always balancing in a judgment act. But in the time I've been on the board, the percentage of our general fund paid for by tuition has gone from 25% to 17%. It will remain at 17%. Our property tax percentage has gone from 56% to 67%, and it's going to stay at 67%. So all in all, I think this is, it's timely. I think if anybody has problems with affordability, we have ways to make that available to them. But we can't simply continue to shift the burden to the property taxpayers, especially, and this is a sore point for all of us because we all want to do better. In fiscal year 2012, we were teaching 369,000 credit hours. In fiscal year 2022, we're estimating to teach 291,000 credit hours. So I think all of those things combined require us at this point to move in the direction far after all of our competitors have done, to raise tuition to a still reasonable level. And then I hope in the next year, we can establish a policy so we know this and so that students have some predictability in what they might. So we know this and so that students have some predictability in what they might pay in their second, third, or fourth year. Since we know it takes our students more than two years generally to get their degree. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Musel. Trustee Musel, I think Don, trustee Don Raton is next.
It's definitely very important to me that our college remains affordable and therefore accessible. And that I look forward to developing a tuition policy in the near future. I did have some hesitancy in considering raising the tuition rate. As I said in our committee of the whole, I'd rather this be something that we stair step over two years, that we take whatever this amount is, whether it's $3 and do it one and a half dollar this, this school year and one and a half dollar for the next school year. Just to soften the blow, so to speak, to our students. However, I will acknowledge that we were presented with a very compelling bar chart that showed our tuition versus other institutions, and we are by far the lowest. And so I always want to be data based, and that chart for me was definitely compelling. And as I spoke with Dr. Andy and spoke about my concerns about what effect this has on our already declining enrollment. He talked about his experience where enrollment does not decline as a direct result of tuition increases. And so that made me feel a little bit better along with the increases and improvements in Pell, the promise, as well as the foundation, increased foundation money that we have. So you know, I can support this, but again, if I had my way, this would be done over two school years.
Thank you, trustee Raton. Trustee Smith Everett, then trustee Ham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My comments are similar to others in that this is a tough vote to take. I am voting in favor of it this time for all the reasons mentioned. I do want to say that I think trustee Musel has now stepped in as the trustee Cook representative would find giving us the long look back historically and numbers to remind us of where we've been and where we are now. One of the things that has been come apparent over the two years that I've been serving and approving each budget is that the pie chart of how we get, how, how we fund our institution has really become warped over time. What its original intention was, was that the taxpayers would pay a third of the college and that our tuition would pay the other third, and that the state and federal would pay that last third. The state has not done their part frankly, over the last about 10 years, and that's affecting us. And so then we are stuck making the hard decisions. I will reiterate what I said at committee of the whole, which is I am very much in favor of a tuition policy that is predictable and allows us to have this discussion regardless of election years and regardless of local political issues happening, so that we don't get caught in the crosswinds of this. However, as trustee Musel mentioned, I think that the data that is leading me towards a vote of yes on this is that our other higher ed peers had raised their rates considerably over the time that we've raised it $1. And so we are not, what we're doing is not out of sync with our partners. In fact, it is very, very conservative in comparison. And that I also think we've got to, to even out that pie chart again, when you go through the budget processes, new trustees, you'll get a lot of pie charts, but one of them really is important on how we get our funding so that we even it back out to our intentions. I'll tell you, there's a great book on the history of JCCC and I'm happy to pass on, but when you read that, the first couple of chapters, they talk about the intention of the original trustees in funding this and how they believed that this community college would be supported over time. And it's important for me to keep up that legacy and make sure that we are well funded, not by one major group and then two secondary groups, but really evenly by all the parts that need to fund higher education. I wanted to say a little more strongly than I did at the committee of the whole, I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I will not vote in favor of another tuition raise without a policy in place for a tuition policy developed by us. So this will be my only time to vote in favor of this, if we do not develop a tuition policy, which as I talked to Dr. Bound about, seemed like something very doable that we can do, and I have faith that our staff can help us craft that so that this is a dependable, ongoing, regular conversation for us. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, trustee Smith Everett. Trustee Ham.
Sure, thank you. I do appreciate a lot of the comments being made, and there's obviously great, great information, great facts added to this. But I will say that we have lower, we have lower tuition, and I'm very proud of that. I want to be the best. I want to offer the best of the best price we possibly can. And I believe that's been our history. And I'm pretty sure, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because I, I was trying to find the information, I couldn't find it. But I believe back in like 2000, we were only charging $43 a credit hour. Does anybody know if that's correct? So. Okay, so with that, I mean, we're looking at, we've more than doubled our tuition over the last 20 years, if that is correct. And again, just because somebody else is doing something, isn't a great reason to change our policy because of somebody else's. If I would be willing to bet, and I haven't looked at your schools that you're referencing, but they probably don't bring in the tax revenue that Johnson County receives to balance out that, that cost and tuition difference. And I, again, I love the way we're doing things. I want to keep it that way. And the other thing that, one of the, another thing I want to bring up is, we may have lower tuition, but we're still big spenders. And the amount of money we spend per person per credit hour is just as high or higher than many of the other institutions in Kansas. And so I would like to be back where we used to be. So again, another thing we're doing, we're keep raising our taxes. We, we've raised our tuition, even though we haven't raised tuition that much, our revenue is going up, and we are doing less credit hours per year. You know, when it's being brought up and everybody agrees, we don't have, we do not have a tuition policy. I'm looking forward to having that discussion and coming up with a plan that we can all move forward on. But we can't just say we haven't done this in the past, we're going to kick the can and take the easy road right now. Because we don't have that policy in place. So I'll, I'll leave my comments of that, and thank you for my time.
You're welcome. Thank you, trustee Hamel. And, and I, look, I, my jokes were meant for no other reason than you hadn't been speaking tonight. And I, I was recognizing that, so there was no other intent there than.
Goodly, I appreciate it. I knew what you were getting at, I could tell. Some things I feel very passionate about, and I just wanted to.
No.
Get to this one to an extent.
And this is the forum for that. So thank you for the civil manner in which you've addressed it, and we appreciate you. Trustee Ingram, then trustee Costin.
Yes, and, and as the conversation continues, it just becomes richer and richer, and I appreciate everyone's thoughts. I don't have a lot to contribute at this point. But I will say that part of it does go back to the conversation earlier where the intent initially was a third, a third, a third, and we are far from that today. And that's one of the things that I think a tuition policy would allow for planning. And I just want to keep that in mind too, that that's going to be a big part of it. So it would allow not only the trustees and our fellow colleagues throughout the campus to, to have a plan, but also for the students and our community. So I would just add that little piece as a reminder as well. So, but I will plan to vote for the recommendation. Don't have the history at, at this point and probably never will of trustee Musel. But that was one of the most difficult votes a couple of years ago when we did raise tuition. So it takes thoughtful leadership to, to do something like this. But I think at this point, it's still a vote that I would make and, and support all of my other colleagues in doing so as well. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, trustee Ingram. Trustee Joy Costin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too, I want to make sure that, I chime in a little bit on this issue. There, this is never easy to think about charging more for something that we all value. And we value it for all people. Want to make sure, we want to make sure that everyone who comes through our doors can afford the education that they need to be successful. And I think that what boils down to for me is making sure we have a balanced approach. When I look at the data that was presented at the committee of the whole, it was very clear that we are lagging behind in making sure that people who do decide to come through our doors as a student pay a competitive price for the goods that they're receiving. It is an exchange in that respect. But I do want to think about that, putting together policies that will make this a more cohesive plan going forward. And making sure that we are always thinking about how we make sure that we have other avenues that, that students can access to make sure that they have the funds that they need to attend our school. So I, I too will be supporting this, this recommendation.
Thank you, trustee Dr. Costin. Mr. Hamel, again, trustee Hamel, then trustee Musel.
I would like to offer a compromise that may or may not work, but I wanted to offer anyways. And I don't know how to offer the proposal necessarily. But I would like to propose that we accept the tuition increases for everything but the county. Accept that now, take time to look at our taxes next month, our tax rates, and then figure out the policy before we raise that tuition this year. Could I get a second?
Is there a second for what I believe is trustee Hamel's amended motion or substitute motion? Hearing none, trustee Hamel, thank you for making the amendment to the motion. I share your concern. I have a list of things I'm going to say, but in the tradition of the chair, including that is, is conducted by trustee Musel, I'm going to wait till the end here, but trustee Musel.
Apologize, I am now unmuted. I'll just tell you, my, my data, as, as the old man in the sea, thank you, trustee Smith Everett, only goes back to fiscal year 09, and it, our tuition and fees, and this is tuition and fees together. It was $65. So I don't go all the way back to 2000. Mark, the earliest I have is 09, 08, 09 school year at $65.
Then I do feel confident it was 43 in 2000 then, so.
I, I wouldn't.
Sounds about right, frankly.
I wouldn't be surprised. And, and I, I think the, the problem with your amendment, Mark, that for me is simply the timing aspect. We can't wait to get, because I, I learned yesterday at college council that fall enrollment will open on March 15. And when the catalog is put online, so people can sign up, they have to know what we're doing. So.
No, I, I, my amendment is to do it the following year if we want to look at it, but for the next year, leave it the same, one more whole year. That's what I'm proposing, sorry.
I just, I don't, I don't think we have, I don't think we should wait on that, given the amount of time we've kept Johnson County's protected, just like we've really done for the other, the other, the other folks. So I think I liked the fact that I hear everybody saying that we'll, we'll put together some kind of a policy. And there are lots of ways to do that and lots of ways, things to discuss in that retreat or otherwise, but I, I think we should move forward tonight on the administration's recommendation. Thank you.
Trustee Musel, a few things that they'll offer here, and I appreciate trustee Hamel and, and what he's attempting to do. I, I will frankly take some responsibility for tuition being as low as it is and, and not being raised, because it was something that did, that bothered me, trustee Hamel, for years. I think your numbers are right. I've, I've only a few times looked at it that far back. But I know when I came on in July of 13, tuition and fees was at $84. And moving it to 97 right now keeps it below, according to the Department of Bureau of Labor Statistics and its inflation calculator, $84 in July of 13 would be $101 now. So we're still below inflation for the dollar, the real dollar amount when I came onto the board. So I, I too have, I appreciate your advocacy to keep tuition and fees low, especially for county residents. But I do thank trustee Musel and the others for their, the recounting of, of everything that happened at the board of the committee of the whole. I, I do think we need a policy that would be useful. I think in my time, this has always been an issue with thorns. But frankly, due to our situation with Moody's, where they would like to see us diversify our revenue pool, the tax burden on our commercial and residential property holders is, is, is real. I'm, I'm not ignoring that. I do think we need a policy to better help guide us and, and know when we need to do this and not have it be a a political football. But I, I think, you know, governing is prioritizing, governing is choosing. And so at this point, we need to raise the money, and we need to make this, this, this movement here as recommended by the, by the administration. Frankly, if anything, I think it should be higher, just to match inflation. I think that would be justifiable. I, I think as trustee Musel has done, and now many of us have done, when you sit at a, at a table and there's fellow trustees across the country with significantly higher tuition and fee rates, it, it, it's hard to justify keeping ours so low, and especially with credit hours down to less than 300,000. So I'll, I'll support this, and unless there's any other comments or questions, I'm going to call the vote and ask all those in favor to please say aye.
Aye.
Yes, thank you. And I, I was the master of not always voting, so thank you for unmuting yourselves. All those opposed, please say no.
No.
By my tally, that is a seven to one, six to one vote. And the motion passes. The next item on our.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If I may just ask, I want to seek some clarification from the board around the policy that there's consistent interest in seeing developed. I've heard it mentioned a tuition policy, but I've also heard it also be described in a broader sense around our revenue mix. Can you help me understand that, please?
Yeah, let me, let me do this, Mr. President. Perhaps just, just open the forum to questions, responding to President Dr. Bound's request. I may pick on trustee Smith Everett, if I may. What, I, I have some ideas. I'm not trying to go to you first or catch you off guard, but what, what suggestions would, would you have, trustee Smith Everett?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think it's important to make a tuition specific policy. When we get, when we go through our budget process, everything that we get from the fabulous Rachel Lear's office and the way that they, that fabulous department gives us all the spreadsheets, all the pie charts, really walks us through it. I don't think we need to have that conversation at a separate time, because we already do it in our budget process, which our three new trustees will become involved with very shortly, but haven't gone through themselves. And so I think what's important, that it needs to be separated out, is just tuition on a regular, and I would argue every two-year basis. I, I could hear other arguments on that and go multiple ways, so that we can come to rely on having a discussion of tuition as a separate item as it relates to our revenue, our need, our budgetary needs, and taking into account our other peers that we've discussed and has come up around in, but in, when we go through the budget process, but probably should be taken separately in conjunction with the conversation about tuition. So that was my thought or request there, and I, and I'm happy to hear others on that.
I have some thought, trustee Musel, yes, sorry.
Thank you, Chair Cross. I, I just think there, there are lots of ways to do this, and it, it, it can't be separated from the rest, the overall budget of how we pay for things at this college and who pays for them. So when you're looking at the pie chart, we're going to focus on tuition's part of that. But I, I just think there are a lot of questions about how you could do it in the overall budget mix, the revenue mix, how you look at your peers, what inflation is doing, and how, what is the cost, as Mark put it, per credit hour per student? And I think, I, I really think this is a good retreat topic where we could explore all of those and see if we can come up with something where there's some consensus. But I, I think all of us just want to know two years from now, this is the framework in which we're going to look at tuition. And it's got to be part of the budget process, because I don't think you completely separate it. And I don't know if that helps you, Dr. Bound, at all, but that's, that's kind of what I would look for. Um, and I don't know if that helps you, Dr. Bound, at all, but that's, that's kind of what I would look for.
Thank you, Trustee Musel.
That is, that is helpful. And also, so you know, and so we should pull it out as a reference. We do have policy two twelve. Point oh two, um, that is a cost per credit hour policy. So we have that existing. I will shoot that out to you all in my weekly update, the link to that. Um, but we should probably start, there's a starting point, and I do think this is um an appropriate retreat topic.
I I agree, uh, Trustee Musel, Mister President. Um, my my thoughts on it very briefly. W- w- would be quite candidly, I don't, I don't know how you take the political issue out of it with respect to the mill and and the monies we receive from Spica. But at the same time, I think knowing, and I I think we have done this from time to time, Trustee Musel, we've gone through and looked at. W- what's the ratio that tuition should be to other revenues? And I I think that would be helpful to know. And, you know, some of this is just the art of running the community college. So I I know that you're in a difficult position, Dr. Bound, and I appreciate that. So I think. You know, just having some better parameters or metrics to know w- w- what's out there and when we should do it. Because I think it's real and we need to raise it and um, I hope that's helpful.
Just want some initial clarity.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Just to um go back just a minute. Um, back to Trustee Musel's point, I I agree that it, of course, it's gonna be part of our budget process because it's part of. The entire package of how we are funded, um, and what what we need to be able to operate. I guess what I would like to do is have it set aside at a time before we're in that budget process. So that we know we get, we get to have that discussion as a separate item and a predictable item. Um, so that when it comes back into the budget process, we have, we have hashed out that component. And then we can work on the rest because the budget, quite frankly, is quite complicated. And there's a lot to consider and a lot of discussions that kind of had us down different rabbit holes at various times. Um, and I would like it to be, you know, a predictable time of year as well that when we review it, we're reviewing at the same time of year. My personal preference will be before our budget cycle. Is it is in full swing, which our budget cycles most of the year. So I understand that that's difficult.
Steve Smith Everett, Trustee Hamel.
Yeah, um, so I, Laura Smith Everett, um, I do agree with that. I'd like to get this thing done quicker this. You know, again, we, I just got on the board, um, but didn't feel like we clearly had enough time to fully discuss this and go through everything that. I would like and maybe others feel the same way. Um, I think this policy could help. And I think adopting this policy kind of towards Greg's point, um, I think you gotta look at this, the whole scope, the whole budget as a whole. Where the dollars go um to make that policy decision. Um, so that when you get to a decision on one item, you already have the policy set. The policy itself. Needs to be our entire budget as a whole when we, when we set that policy.
Thank you, Trustee Hamel. Uh, with no other comments, I, a few other items here from the Committee of the Whole. We had a report regarding. Audit reports and the Ethics hotline report, the Audit Ad- Advisory Services Department. Did not make its planned presentation on the biannual travel and expense review. The Ethics Point Report. And on current audit projects as there was a time constraint. Trustees were invited. To review the reports, which were included in their packets and assured that the department would be available to provide any additional information required. Trustee Musel stated that the audit of the trustee travel expenses concluded that the expenses were compliant and with college policy. Uh, so that happened. Other informational items, uh, no, no questions were raised regarding the informational items provided. In the Committee of the Whole packet. Uh, that's an interesting point to raise, but thank you. Doctor Bound for that. Uh, the working agenda of the Committee of the Whole was also presented. Uh, and it's in the board packet, just to give us an overview of that, uh, the committee structure we now employ. Uh, that concludes my report from uh the Committee of the Whole. I have invited uh Trustee Ingram. Uh, to give the Committee of the Whole report next time, uh, so that I'm not talking this entire meeting. And this uh leads us to our next item, which is President's recommended recommendations for actions and the Treasurer's Report. Trustee Smith Everett. Did I skip something?
No, sorry, I was confused by President's part. I'm with you now. Um, thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh, the Treasurer's Report can be found on pages eight through nineteen of your board packet. The uh board packet includes uh the Treasurer's Report for the month ended uh December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Some items of note include page one is the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund Summary. December is the sixth month of the college's twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. Uh, the college's federal fund, sorry, general fund, unencumbered cash balance was seventy-four point three million as of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. And expenditures and the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits. It is a recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approved the Treasurer's Report for the month ended December thirty-first. Twenty-twenty-one, subject to audit, and I will move to make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Smith Everett moves, Trustee Ingram seconds. The motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Does that conclude your report, Trustee Smith Everett?
It does. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Welcome. Uh, our next item now is, of course, uh, Dr. Bound's monthly report to the board.
All right, so um you uh. Unfortunately, you didn't get to meet Caleb today, but you got to hear about Caleb and hear a little bit from Caleb. Um, again, I, it's one of the highlights of each and every month for me is is uh. Getting to spend some time one-on-one with the students and then watching them interact with you, um, frankly, brings me a great deal of joy. So. All right, um, let's talk about um several things on the agenda here. Let's, let's talk uh about enrollment. Um, and so enrollment um. Uh, isn't where we want it to be, uh, but it is where it is. We finished the census, um, that is. Um, uh, taken, it was taken on the fourteenth of um February, so this is where we stand. We were just. Slightly better than this um a month ago, um, and we're anticipating that we would end somewhere around the five percent range. Um, down, um, and, you know, certainly this uh is a goal to address and improve for the coming year. Um, headcount and credit hours align pretty closely, um, right both at about five percent. Um, i- if if we look at um our our students, um, and, you know, again, what we've talked about before. Um, we did see that significant, uh, our noticeable decline um for female students in all age groups. Um, except for um sixty and above. Um, we were also down in non-degree seeking students. Um, as well as um those who had previously attended. I think without this being entirely anecdotal, um, I I think that this is very much an impact of. Of COVID and the um challenges that our students are facing. Um, and I I think it's also the fact that, you know, we continue to have about a fifty-fifty split. In terms of of uh in-person uh and online. Now, we continue to be up in evening courses, um, in uh developmental reading courses, in first-time students. Um, and uh, and so that's, that's about where we are and and from an analysis standpoint. What I have to offer tonight, if we look at our non-credit instruction. Um, again, through our continuing ed workforce development group, the numbers continue to be very strong again. We're at a hundred and thirty-eight percent of where we were a year ago. Um, on the fourteenth of February, um, um, excuse me, of where we were two years ago. Um, we're a hundred and seventy-one percent of where we were a year ago. Um, and well on target um to meet and exceed um the goal. Um, when when we think about, you know, other groups of students that, from a non-credit standpoint that we serve. Um, you know, whether we think about courses through the the Nerman Museum. Contemporary Art, through um the Midwest Trust Center, through CLEAR, and in other occupational programs. Um, you know, we're, we're rapidly approaching fifty-five hundred uh students already. Um, and so as we take this specific snapshot for continuing ed workforce development. Um, uh, we're, we're well on on track uh to achieve the goals um set for that group. When, when I, you you already heard a lot about uh already tonight, um, our National Legislative Summit through ACCT. Um, and so I won't say much more about that, other than that, I I think that hot topic. Um, uh, in in DC was not just Pell in general, although. That certainly is a priority, I think, for us as an institution, um, but also for uh. Community colleges and higher education students in general is a high priority. Specifically for community colleges and and very definitely for us is the opportunity um. Uh, for short-term Pell and hoping that that'll make it through on the Senate side, um, and and uh. And and move to the president. Um, short-term Pell, um, Pell currently um. Cuts off in terms of programmatic eligibility at six hundred hours of instruction. Short-term Pell would take that down to a hundred and fifty. It would clearly open up the avenue for non-credit instruction. Um, that's where our continuing ed group um and and uh their programs becomes really attractive. Um, it also, um, in in what it passed um through the House, um. Included um uh excluding for-profit institutions of higher education. From access to short-term funding. So, um, anyways, as as already reported, a very good trip. Um, and engagement with our um our senators and Congresswoman. Um, in addition to that, I wanted to take a moment and talk a little bit about the League for Innovation. Uh, this is a national organization that we are a part of. In fact, we are a board member college. Um, we have been in a member of the League for decades. Um, and it has been an instrumental part of of who we are um as an institution. Um, a- again, they serve predominantly, but not exclusively, community and technical colleges. Um, they provide a wealth of resources, let alone the relationships with. Some of the most exemplary community colleges in the country, um, but resources such as an innovation library. Place where we can go and see what others are doing, um, and uh, as they call it, rip off and duplicate. Um, or flatter the others that are doing great work and and uh look for opportunities to adjust and adapt what they're doing. Um, to our needs here. Um, on an annual basis, they offer a learning summit, which is a targeted. Um, experience where typically a college would send a team of people. Um, we have not participated in that. Um, in the, in the last, well, since COVID um really kicked in. Um, and so I know I have participated in their learning summits in the past, uh, when I was a uh. Part of Grand Rapids Community College and saw firsthand, um, that focus team engagement. Uh, along with teams from other colleges, um, really spurs, um, really good, along with industry partners. Spurs on really good innovation. Their Innovations Conference um is a highlight each and every year that's coming up. Uh, at the end of this month and early in uh March, it will be a virtual conference this year, and then they offer um. Very targeted solutions workshops, focused workshops, and even shorter period than than the learning summits. Um, as well as a variety of of um. Uh, online experiences throughout the year, webinars and so forth. Um, we have been an active member historically and a leader, um, and it's been a. If the the uh league colleges are ones that we often. Uh, benchmark uh against in a variety of ways as a college. Because they're considered to be some of the the finest community colleges, the most successful community colleges in the country. By their data and by the things that they implement. As I said earlier, we are a board member college. Um, I am, I currently serve on the board um as the president. And Dr. Randy Weber um serves as our college representative, our league representative. Um, for the college um in a group um that um uh provides great work and leadership on behalf of. Of the league. As we think about the coming months, um, we we're, we are entering into, or we're actually well into. The reaffirmation process. When a new president um comes to the college. Um, they they give the college a year's, a year's grace. Um, and then enter a reaffirmation process. We submitted a written report um before um. Before the break uh between semesters, um, the the board has reviewed that. Um, and we've been invited for a site visit. Again, today, um, the league is operating in virtual site visits. Um, um, and so uh they will want to uh spend time with you. As well as uh seeing a variety of presentations around innovative practices within the college. So I I'm working with a very small team right now. We'll be broadening that as we move forward. Um, but you will soon have a uh calendar invite inviting you as trustees. Uh, to meet with the site team. They very much want to hear from the board about the importance of innovation to the college. Of how we see the opportunities for um uh innovation and engagement with the league. Um, and the value that we place on innovation as a college. Um, and so there's um that. I am. I've got one more item and then I'll break for questions and I apologize because I can't see any of you right now. All I get to do is see the screen, so I don't know if there are questions, so I apologize um for that. The last item. I- in my report today, um, is uh an an update um regarding uh COVID. Um, and so, um, earlier this week, um, IRT repre- recommended to the Executive Policy Group. Or Cabinet, um, as it's most commonly affirmed, but from emergency management standpoint. Uh, Cabinet becomes the Executive Policy Group, um, that gained consensus around. Um, our COVID nineteen protocols. Um, i- it is our plan to um. Remove the mask requirement, endorse um effective April fourth. If, you see, that's in all caps, um, if the environment, um, assuming the environment. Continues to trend in a positive direction. Um, we will um continue to uh have discussions. Um, with faculty, staff, and students to address operational issues and or concerns. Um, I think the advantage of announcing this now, that this is our intent. Um, gets it out in the open. We can talk openly about it and work through. Um, uh, the plan to get to an April fourth um date. I I will also say, though, if if the trends um uh reverse course. Um. That, um, then, you know, then I think we've got to look at how we maintain the and protect the learning environment. As we've worked so hard to do um over these past uh two years. So I'm uh bringing that forward as our plans. Um, to move this forward um through uh Executive Policy Group. And with that. I'm gonna put this down and engage back in conversation with you where I can see you.
Uh, thanks, President Dr. Bound. Anything else to add in your report? I I apologize.
I think I've run on for a while, so I'd be happy to entertain questions.
Fine, uh, Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, two questions for you, Dr. Bound. First one is, um, that League of Innovation report. Do you know which? When it was sent?
It was a few weeks ago. We will resend it to you so you don't have to wonder where it is.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate that. Radar, lots of things on the radar at all times. Appreciate that. Um, the other question is, when you say that um you are looking for the trends to be going in the right direction, has the IRT come up with a threshold? Of what they feel is safe for us to go maskless, so um. Well, I was looking at the dashboard today and we are just now um back to the highest uh rates that was. Were happening during Delta. And so I ha- I, in particular, um, am concerned. And so I had, I in particular am concerned that we're going to put people at risk. Let's say if we plateaued at the level we are right now, and I just wondered if there was a level that IRT was looking for that would indicate we were safe to go maskless.
And Dr. Bound, if you would please, could you define IRT, please?
Yes, thank you very much. IRT is the Incident Response Team. Thank you very much. Yeah, for, yeah. Anyways, I, Incident Response Team, that is a group of professionals within the college that are the experts really in this from, from an overall safety, risk management, safety and security, as well as representatives, leaders from academic affairs, student affairs, communications and operations. I think I have them. And so that they're watching that, we watch very closely. You know, what I'm watching is to see when the, when you look at the, the dashboard from a county standpoint, and we get down and, and we're down at the bottom of the orange category and, and specifically into the blue and the yellow is where I feel most comfortable. But it's taking those into fact, into consideration together with a number of other factors, including cases on campus and so forth. So we'll be watching very deliberately to make sure that in order to implement as desired, that we're going to do it in a way that keeps the learning environment as reasonably safe as possible.
Okay, I would, if at some point we could have that threshold, I mean, if we could have what that number is that you are looking for, I, I'm gonna go back right now while we're having this discussion, look at that blue level. That helps me just to know what, what we're shooting for, to make sure that when we do this, we're keeping our faculty, staff and students safe, so that we can preserve that learning environment that we've talked about is the most important thing that we do. So thank you so much. Appreciate it. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Trustee Smith Everett. Trustee Dawn Raton.
My apologies, it's a little loud here. I just want to make sure, have we decided on how we will address those operational issues and concerns? What is the way that we will, who do they contact? Are there public meetings set up? I just want to understand how we plan to address those.
And, and that's what I'll be looking heavily to IRT to help us operationalize that specifically. This has moved quickly this week. And so we don't have all of the details worked out yet, but we will absolutely seek to address the concerns that our employees and students may have.
Yes, I, I just want to make sure that those employees that do have some compromised health and students are addressed and that they know that we care, that they know we want to keep them safe. And that's very important to us.
And, and I will say that, you know, there'll be communication coming out tomorrow that begins to lay that out.
Thank you, Trustee Raton. Mr. President, Trustee Costen and Trustee Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I too just want to echo that keeping our constituents safe, both faculty, students, our staff is really paramount here. But I do want to ask, after the April fourth deadline, or maybe before that April fourth deadline, will again, these policies be revisited so that we are, we understand what those thresholds are? And we can kind of see how, what their thinking is as that date approaches?
Yeah, this is, IRT is watching while they meet on a, on an every other week basis. Members of IRT are watching those numbers daily. I know they are because I hear about it. And frankly, I go out and look at them pretty regularly as well to ensure that, you know, we're mindful of what's happening around us, but also what's happening within the college for our, our faculty and staff. And, and I guess I, I would, I would make this observation of our team across the college. As folks have done a really good job at keeping each other safe and maintaining the learning environment. And we wouldn't be bringing this forward if we didn't believe that the numbers were, that, that that indicators were moving in the right direction and that we believed that they would be at a level appropriate to maintain the, the, the learning environment and working environment that we're seeking to do. And I, I, I hope that our colleagues and you hear this as well. I, I take this very seriously. That our relationship, our ability to work well effectively together is critically important. And, and we've done a good job so far. And frankly, this isn't the time to mess it up. And, and if I thought that this was going to do that, I wouldn't be bringing this forward to you tonight. It also gives us time to get it out in the open and have the conversation within the college as we move forward. And, and I know that, you know, from my conversations with, you know, I mean, as recently as this afternoon with Dr. Leicher, with members of, of cabinet or executive policy group. And, and then I think back to the, over time, the work of the various groups across campus, whether returning to campus, when we went from, nobody was, hardly anybody was on campus except for limited staff. There was a very thoughtful process of going through that. And so, you know, it is, it is our hope, as we move forward that to model what we've done best and to continue doing that because, you know, we understand that, that there's all kinds, there are so many different perspectives rolled into, into this transition.
Thank you. I appreciate the leadership that is being put forward on this issue. It's so very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Costen. Trustee Ingram.
But I did want to say thank you to everyone for their understanding as we have navigated this. You know, we, we continue to have twists and turns that I don't think, you know, I mean, when you think about the magnitude of a community college and what we offer and those whom we serve. And beyond the day-to-day operations of the education of our students, you know, we've got the Nerman Museum. We have performing arts events that go on. I mean, it just is endless to the, the folks that need to be considered as we're making these kinds of decisions. So, you know, along with everything else that we've discussed tonight, this is, this is a tough situation. We're all wanting it and wishing for it because we want to move on. I mean, there's certainly no doubt about that in anyone's mind. But just the, the confidence that we have in your ability to guide us through to make sure that everything is safely done as we move forward is, is much appreciated. So, you know, I think of the clear program, I mentioned art museum, you know, the, the cafe, you know, just, just place where people have avoided. You know, I just, that safety is extremely important. So thank you very much. I, I understand. But we appreciate everyone's confidence in us as we navigate through the next couple of months too. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Ingram. Trustee Raton, then Trustee Smith Everett.
Dr. Andy, I do appreciate that you're going to continue, you, the IRT and the cabinet are going to continue to monitor these results closely and that it's not all or nothing and that you will change course if needed. One question that, and I may miss this, forgive me if I don't know where it is. Is there a public dashboard on our website that we may access in the public? Students and faculty may see to see whether we're trending up or down, whether that's numbers, a chart, red light, green light, blue light, any of that kind of stuff? And where to find it?
So, yes, so within the college, our website, if you were to go to the search function and type in COVID tracker, that will pull you to that. And that shows the number of cases and in new cases per day.
Is, is that in the county and the college?
That is college, that is the college only number.
Thank you, Trustee Raton. Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just checked on the dashboard that Dr. Bound sent us in an email the last few days. And so the, to be in the blue, we would need to be at four point nine nine percent. And the current, currently in the county, we're at seven point nine. Our height during Omicron was thirty percent. So we have fallen quite dramatically in the last ten days, basically. So just for clarification, because I like to kind of know a number. And I will be consulting back and looking for that as we move forward and get closer to April. Thank you very much.
And if I can just add, if we, if we were to look back at last spring and summer, I think you would see, if I recall correctly, that we were floating around in the yellow and blue. And, and that was at a period of time when we did not require, we did not require masks on campus.
Thank you both. Trustee Hamel.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I, I received a ton of emails and phone calls, especially in the last week. I don't know if anybody else did. But I want to thank everybody in the community for being concerned about these issues. And I also want to thank everybody on the operations team that went ahead and worked on making changes and setting new policy here for, for April fourth policy change. So, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Hamel. Seeing no other comments or questions, I'll just add it, it is a pleasure to work with this administration and President Bound. Like even when we don't agree, we can still find ways to work together. Like for instance, you like the Cubs, I don't. And I, my preference would be to keep the masks for the balance of the semester. I do however appreciate the, the watchful eye to watch numbers and make sure we have the option to be safe. I mean, I'm so old, before there was an RPO, run pass option in football, we played the beer. So we just handed it to the fullback or pitched it to the tailback, you know. So I appreciate you, you giving us the option to do what needs to be done as, as you read the play, as it, as it develops, you and your team. So I do appreciate that. I know it has been a thoughtful consideration and one that puts our safety first. So I, I appreciate that greatly. Any other comments with respect to, are you, have you concluded, Dr. Bound? I'm sorry.
Actually, I have a couple of things that I left off on the first slide. And so if we go back, no, I'm not going to pull up the slides. But just a, a couple of quick things. We didn't have any formal recognitions and awards at the beginning of the meeting. However, in our board packets, we get every month a compilation of reports from across the college. And this month, one jumped out at me and that was from our dining services team. And I just wanted to recognize them. They were recognized with a gold medal for the Loyal E. Holton Award for their online catering menu. This group does a great job and I won't single anybody out because it's a team of folks that make it happen. But we can go into an app on our phone and order lunch and go pick it up. And it's red, I mean, they just do a fantastic job. And it blossomed, this was an innovation that blossomed through the early days of COVID and it's continued and it's been a fantastic service to folks on, on campus. And then I, I will say is as much consternation as, as making a decision about COVID creates on a lesser scale, but nonetheless angst-producing at times, is the wrong decision you get to make about whether school is open or closed. And it is always the wrong decision. But I will say, as of tomorrow, we expect to be open. So I'm not going to get a cheer from the students tonight. And that's okay because we got to get back to school. But what I do want to throw some recognition is to our facilities and grounds crews. You know, as the snow was winding down, they went into full action to ensure that our campus is ready to go tomorrow. And so I think of Tom Hall and Dean Spalding and their teams across the campus, across the hours of the day and night that are working to get campus opened up tomorrow from a snowstorm that actually delivered what they said it was going to. So with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I grew up in Lawrence and went to the University of Kansas. And I think it was Trustee Ingram today for someone, my neighbor who was a K Stater. You know, in both Lawrence and Manhattan, we went to school really in any weather. And I think what that taught me was you keep going and in order to accomplish things, especially academically, but as you need to in the private sector, in a job, you have to go, you have to keep going. And so I appreciate, you know, today was a thick day. I, I helped shovel part of my driveway and I, I think you made the right call. So thank you again to you and your team.
The team that helps.
I don't see that we have any old business. Our next item on the agenda, the item after that is a new business, excuse me, I skipped new business. So are there any, any new business any trustee would like to take up? Mr. Musial Shuka said, no, I feel sufficiently confident to move on to old business. There is no old business. We have the consent agenda. The consent agenda is in your board packet. Is there any items the trustees would like to pull off the consent agenda and consider separately? Or could we just have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as is?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as it is in our board packet.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Smith Everett. Trustee Raton, seconded. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say yes. All those opposed, say no, please. Hearing none, the motion to adopt the consent agenda passes unanimously. I, I do believe we have an executive session as Kelsey Nazar has given me, and Terry Slush has given me a form that we have to keep track of. So we do have one executive session still, right, Dr. Bound? And I've lost my form, but I'll find it. What time? Should, could we start at seven fifteen? Is that too late?
I, I think it's good to give folks a couple of seconds to.
Do you want to do twenty or seven fifteen? Okay. Let's start at seven fifteen. I think, I remember Kelsey and I talked about going to seven, half an hour, right, Dr. Bound?
That is correct.
Okay.
Sir Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you find your recommendation?
I did.
Okay, very good.
I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel matters of non-selected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals involved. No act should be taken in this session. The executive session will last for thirty minutes, beginning at seven fifteen. And since I fumbled around, you want to make it seven sixteen? Let's do seven, seven sixteen. And ending at seven forty-six, at which time open session will resume at Zoom via this link. We would like to invite Dr. Bound and Kelsey Nazar to join the executive session. And is there a motion?
So moved.
Uh, I think I heard Trustee Hamel. Who was that? Second?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, folks, we'll see you at seven fifteen. We, we've exhausted our time and we need more time. So I think I need another motion to go into executive session for the same purpose for personnel matters and non-elected personnel.
Make a motion for fifteen minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close.
Before we go, why don't we ratify the first one that we all agreed to?
Yes, I neglected to take a vote on the first motion for executive session. I, do we have any motion to ratify that earlier vote?
I, I moved, I'd move to confirm and ratify that we moved into executive session for the thirty-minute period, just exhausted.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Okay, so what time?
Mr. Chair, you had to vote as well for both of those.
I, I, the motion passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Do we vote on both motions, Zoe Lee? I think that's Laura's point.
Let's start, like, I do support, like, when I don't know, let's just back up. We have a motion made and approved to go into a new executive. made and approved to go into a new executive session, correct?
Yes.
Kelsey? Okay. Now, with respect to ratifying the old motion, I had three votes in favor. I'm voting yes, too. That's unanimous for.
Just want to, yeah, just want to confirm, we took two two separate votes. Both of them were 4-0.
Oh, I probably rushed it. I apologize. I'm I'm trying to keep it straight, so. Kelsey, are we good or do I need to?
So the next executive executive session start at 7:50 and end at 8:05? Would that be right for 15 minutes?
Let's do 7:51.
8:06.
8:06.
Got it.
And then we'll use the same link and no business. No action will be taken during this session. The executive session will last for the second one will be 15 minutes, beginning at 7:51, ending at 8:06, at which time the open session will resume at the Zoom link. We'd like to invite Dr. Bound and Kelsey Nazar again to participate in the session and we'll see you over there at 7:51. We returned from executive session, which no action was taken. Now I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
You opposed? I think it passes unanimously.
Good job, Chair Cross.
Well, my perfect.
Have a good evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you, bye.